Ladies and gentlemen, if you could find your seats. That'd be great. First, we're sorry for the delay. Closed session went a little bit over, but we should have plenty of time. One of the presentations is here. We don't think the second one is, so we should have plenty of time to finish this presentation under our clock here. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Desert Hot Springs, and the City Council serving as a successor agency, the Redevelopment Agency Board for June 6, 2017. This is our presentation period at 5:30 tonight. We have so far one presentation, and we're going to ask that Eileen Flores, Government Affairs Representative for Southern California Edison, join me at the front. And we'd also like Ashley Eckert from Desert Hot Springs High School, recipient of a scholarship from the Edison International Scholarship Program, join us up front also. And if she wanted any family friends up there, we're more than welcome to come up. There'll be some picture opportunities. We'll meet you right at the podium here. Play to the cameras here. First, I'm going to give Eileen the mic, and she's going to explain what the scholarship's about, and then I have a presentation from the City Council, and then we'll hear from Ashley.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Eileen Flores. I am the Government Affairs Representative from Southern California Edison, and I work along with many cities, including Desert Hot Springs. Edison International is the parent company of Southern California Edison, and Edison International helps fund educational programs because one of our top priorities is helping nurture the scholars of tomorrow. This year, thirty high school seniors that attend school or live in, within the Southern California Edison territory were awarded with a $40,000 scholarship. These scholarships were awarded to those who are pursuing studies in STEM programs, which is the fields of science, technology, engineering, or math at a four-year accredited university or college. And of course, they demonstrated outstanding academic success. When I found out that Ashley Eckert from Desert Hot Springs was one of the recipients, one of the first thing I thought of was, I need to let the City Council and the City Manager know, because this is something that the community really can be proud of, something in the community, her teachers, her family. So here we are today, so that we can welcome Ashley into the Edison Scholar Family, and Ashley has a few words to share.
Hello. I would like to thank Edison for providing me with the scholarship, for thinking that my education is worth investing in, and to my school too, because I've had some really great help along the way, including Mr. Bullis, who is here today, and from my counselors and my teachers for, for leading me along the way, so I could find out what I wanted to do, which is, I'm, which is what I'm going to be, end up studying. I'm going to be studying computer science at UC San Diego this fall, and I'll be leaving in August to a summer program, and from there on, I'll just continue my studies. And so I would just like, really like to thank everybody that has pushed me along the way, my mom, my friend, my friends, and the community, because this is really something for the community, because I was born here, I was raised here, and it's something, and, and it's just, I'm very thankful for all the help I've had along the way. And I would like to thank Eileen, especially for coming out here all the way, and just to support me and, and present me with this honor. I'm very thankful. Thank you.
And Ashley, on behalf of the, the Mayor and the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, we hereby honor Ashley Eckert, Desert Hot Springs High School, on her $40,000 scholarship through Edison International Edison Scholarship Program. Congratulations, and we hope you can come back to the Coachella Valley and do wonderful things here, but go get your education, use this money wisely, and congratulations from the Mayor and City Council.
Thank you.
We need you in here. Come on. Wow, let me see that. Wait a minute. Party. Okay, there's party in dorm block C, was it? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, with that said, is there anybody from the YMCA here? All right, we'll move that presentation to the next council meeting. We'll be in recess for, until six o'clock. If you could find your seats, we're going to get the meeting started. All right, this is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as a successor agency. All right, the regular meeting of the City Council, the City Council serving as a successor agency, the Redevelopment Agency Board for June 6, 2017. This is our 6:00 PM regular session here at the Carl May Center. And again, we wanted to thank the Mission Springs Water District for allowing us to utilize their chambers. I believe Russ Martin, the President, is here. Thank you very much. That was, it was a fiasco for a few months, as we had two different floods happen here, and we had to utilize our chambers. And again, thank you to the Mission Springs Water District for that. We will call the, as we called the meeting in order, we now take a roll call.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmembers Zavala.
Present.
Mayor Protem Parks. And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Mayor Protem Parks is attending a promotion for one of her grandkids tonight, so she will not be attending the meeting. She was here earlier for the study session and closed session, but she's had to leave. Family comes first.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to excuse the absence.
Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The absence is excused. I'm sure she'll be appreciative of that. We're going to have our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation's going to be given by retired Reverend Paul Miller. I just threw in the retired part, because he loves to tell people he's retired now. And then our Pledge of Allegiance, our flags will be presented by, after the invocation, will be presented by troop 1606, and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to even gather and not having guards out the front door telling us we can't come in. We thank you for the freedom that we have at the expense of so many. And so on this day, we also remember the lives of folks given for the, for freedom's sake. And so this evening, we pray for your blessing upon this time, upon the deliberations, the decisions made, that all would be to your glory and benefit this community, each and every one of our citizens, for we pray in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Troop attention. Collar guard attention. Collar guard advance. Collar guard, prepare to post colors. All those in uniform salute, all those in civilian clothing, please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Collar guard, post colors. Collar guard salute. Two. Collar guard regroup. Collar guard dismissed.
Thank you again to troop 1606. All right, the City Attorney will now report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, we do have one reportable item with respect to number four on the agenda. The city has entered into a tolling agreement between the Atkinson Family Revocable Living Trust and the City of Desert Hot Springs relating to an extension of tentative track maps, 35009 and 35448. The tolling agreement would extend the time to sue. It's approximately 180 days. I'm saying approximately, I think it's a couple weeks shy of that. The vote in closed session was 310. The three votes that were aye were Councilmembers Zavala, Councilmember McKee, and Councilmember Parks. Nay was Councilmember Betts, and abstained was, was the mayor because he had a conflict of interest. That is, oh, one other thing is the agreement isn't 100% finalized. City Council gave the direction to the City Attorney and the City Manager to, to negotiate a couple further terms.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, but I didn't state my recusal ahead of the meeting when I got into closed session.
Go ahead.
I realized that I had an item that I had to recuse on, and that dealt with purchasing some property or something that was near our salon, so I recused. I left the room. I didn't participate in that discussion.
All right, now that all the recusals have been stated on the record, the report's been given, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. At this time, we'll be approving the agenda in whole, plus a consent calendar in whole. So if there's any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar at this time, we would do that. Mr. Betts, you have a recusal on a couple consent calendar items. You do not need to leave the room, but just state your recusal.
I'll be recusing on items 23, 24, and 25, because I have property that I own within the affected area of those landscape lighting and maintenance districts.
Any other recusals? All right, with that said, I'll take a motion on the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, please vote. Mr. City Clerk.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, if I can make one announcement.
Yes.
So if anyone is here for the Rancho del Oro Assessment Ballot Proceedings, if you're here to turn in your ballot, we are doing that over in this corner over here.
Thank you very much. After we get through public comments, it'll be the first public hearing tonight, will be the Rancho del Oro Proceedings, and we will make more announcements on dropping off ballots and how that process will go as we get there. Public comments, at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. If it is listed on the agenda, you must speak at that time. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Comments are listed to the first ten speakers at three minutes each. Speakers may not yield their time to others without the consent of the mayor. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall to be devoid of any personal tax. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. I have blue cards in the back there you may fill out to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. You don't have to fill one out to speak on the agenda. We will actually just call you forth from there. Our first speaker tonight is Judy Shea, followed by Eddie Johnson. Your three minutes are on the sideboards. If you could watch your time, please.
Good evening, the sideboard.
The side monitors, sorry.
Okay. Hi, Judy Shea, Desert Hot Springs, CEO Desert Hot Springs Community Task Force. We've been providing service and service providers, facilities to this city for, since 1989, '91, and that amounts to tens of millions of dollars worth of service and facilities. We want to open up a veterans' home, okay? And it's right next to a residential assisted living facility. The type of persons that we will facilitate are like your uncles, your fathers, your brothers, people that are close to you, like my brother was to me when I brought him here from Chicago and kept him alive for four years, until he died of Agent Orange after two tours of Vietnam. These persons will have to be clean and sober. They will have gone through drug treatment, whether they be coming from the rescue mission or the ranch, some, of that nature. They will be giving vocational counseling, educational, mental health, and, and the part of this will be put through smooth transitions, which we are negotiating a memorandum of understanding. There'll be peer counseling and e-benefits through the VA. These people are not going to be the drudges of the world. They're just going to be folks that have, men that have post-traumatic stress disorder and need the extra help, and they need to help with their benefits. They need not to be sleeping out in the desert, or, you know, we need to get them into the services they need, and then put them into permanent housing. They can stay there as long as they like, okay? We're not going to say 90-day restriction. You know, it can be a veterans' home, like they have in Barstow. You know, we, that's the closest one I know of that we have, is in Barstow. Yes, there's services over there in Loma Linda, and yes, they have to travel there. And that's the same habitually, that they don't have enough people that derive to Loma Linda. I know, I used to go three times a week with my brother, and to get him the services he needed, and I increased his benefits just because I'm a little bit, you know, have a little bit more on the ball than him. And, you know, his psychiatric, to Dr. Casey at, at Loma Linda, he improved 300%, you know, and I got his benefits three times what they were giving him. So these people need, you know, these veterans need to leg up. They need it now. I have a nephew in a mental health place right now, because they sent him to Afghanistan, they sent him to Iraq. We got 21 vets killing themselves every single day. We need to give them the help they need, and it needs to be now. You know, it, I, I just feel very strongly about this, and I just have too many deaths in my family, you know, from my husband, my brother, my cousin, it goes on and on. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Eddie Johnson, followed by Russell Fletcher.
My name is Eddie Johnson, Vietnam vet, in Desert Hot Springs. I want to compliment the city and everybody involved in doing this Veterans Park. It looks gorgeous up there. New benches, new table, new lighting. The flag is awesome. Everybody took your time to do it, you did it well. So I want to compliment you guys. Great job. Number two, the flag here is torn, the US flag, and hopefully we replace that very soon. It's flying kind of raggedy, but that's why, I wanted to talk about the Vietnam wall. Would I be permissible to do that?
Two and a half minutes. Go for it.
Okay, I'll go slow. No. Vietnam traveling wall will be here the 22nd of June. 6:00 PM is the opening ceremony, even though it's set up by 2:00. We encourage everybody to come out to the opening ceremony. It'll be a good ceremony, and also will be here for 24 hours a day through the 26th. 11:00, they start the closing ceremony, and by noon, it's over. And we just scored the 21-gun salute. Honor guards will be here to do that again, like we did in 2011, and I hope everybody comes out for this event, my event memorial for the Vietnam Memorial Combat Moving Wall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eddie. Russell Fletcher, followed by Irene Rodriguez. Irene Rodriguez is the last public speaker I have on non-agenditized items. Mr. Fletcher, you can be, you can hand them to the City Clerk. They'll make copies for the City Council. They won't be handed to them tonight, but they will be tomorrow in their mailboxes. I need you just to speak into the mic so it can be recorded. Thanks.
Code violation, violations at the house where I live, up there on 7th, but yet I have pictures of here the city's same violations at the city yard, and they want to fine us for it. So I wanted to be, our fines would be suspended until the city can get their stuff together and not give me a code violation for what they're in violation of. And one of the violations is we're parking on dirt. I complained two years ago about Arco Towing parking 49 vehicles at a time on the dirt out there, and they said, oh, we're going to look into it. We made them get a business license for the storage facilities, but they never did nothing about it, because Arco Towing has a, a contract with the city. So they get the slide for two, two years now, but yet they're going to fine us $200 for a vehicle parking in the dirt that, they don't have any picture, prior pictures of it, it's just one vehicle that was there that one time. I could see if they had pictures of my car, which is there every day, parking in the dirt, but it wasn't. It was a friend of mine from Redlands, didn't know about the not parking on the dirt, parked there, and they took a picture of that and gave us a fine, a few hundred dollars for it. It's outrageous. And then our ground cover in front of my house, the city's rideaway comes up to 18 inches in front of my house, in front of my front door. What do they want me to cover? I've been trying to get with them for years. They asked them, if they want to put the ground cover on their rideaway, give me the stuff, I'll spread it, you know, we'll get back to you on that, we'll get back to you on that. They never do. So I want something done. I want our fine suspended until the city can comply with their own code violations and make other people that have contracts comply with their code, city codes.
Thank you for your comments. I believe a city staff member might meet you in the back in a minute, give some information from you. Irene Rodriguez, followed by, I don't have any other blue speaker cards.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. As you may know, on May 20th, we celebrated Evening at the Pueblo. It was just a beautiful night, while the community came to celebrate the legacy and the vision of Cabot's Yorks. Thank you for celebrating with the community, the board, the volunteers, and the staff. We're ahead already, planning for the following year, so we're continuing with the school program. We have identified three schools within Desert Hot Springs that will be participating and making a difference. Our cultural weekends are also scheduled for January, February, and March. And we've been in partnership and collaborating with two different organizations. One is the Diversity Committee, which they will have their inaugural Pride Festival on November the 18th on Cabot's Polo Museum. And with that, they were able to secure a slot with eyes on the desert, so it will be featured both the Pride Festival and Cabot's Polo Museum. And we're also excited to be collaborating with Desert Hot Springs Historic Society. In November, we'll be opening our Untold Stories exhibition, will be in the second floor of, of the museum itself. And last fall, by the Palm Springs Oasis, they did a whole video that came, that was featured on YouTube about Cabot's Polo Museum, and her series was called Wanderlust, and this was done by Andy Lasco. And so now they're in partnership where it's going to be featured at KMR. And for Cabot's segment, it's going to be showing on August the 14th, on Monday, between 4:45 and 5:00 PM. So it's really exciting. Our museum in the city is getting really high visibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Thank you for everything you're doing for the museum. With that, I have no other public speakers, and we'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda today. All right, with that, we will close public comments, and I'll go to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask our Community Development Director to speak a little bit about some grant funding we just received.
Thank you. In February, I'll just give you guys a brief history, actually. In February, the SEVAG Executive Committee approved the creation of Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Program. What that program did was it made $10 million of funding available for projects in the Coachella Valley that directly address bicycle pedestrian accidents and fatalities. They opened up the release of applications for grants. They received 31 applications from nine different jurisdictions totaling over $30 million. Out of those 31 applications, the City of Desert Hot Springs submitted four applications that totaled a little bit more, a little bit over $6 million. SEVAG went on and reviewed and analyzed every single application, and they ranked them by most effective, they had different criteria they ranked them on, but most effective and the fastest they can get done. That list was released and was presented to the SEVAG Transportation Committee yesterday, and the recommendation from the Transportation Committee was to award the top 10 projects. In the top 10 project, the number one project was actually one project that Desert Hot Springs submitted for $2 million for Palm Drive Signals and Lighting. The project would enhance and install some traffic signals, pedestrian signals, and street lighting on Palm Drive from Hacienda to Pearson and extend south to Tu Bunch. The next steps we'll take is that the project would now go to the regional SEVAG for award or for actual finalizing. The agreements were actually going to get negotiated between SEVAG and each different agency to the details of the projects. So we are in the top ranked out of the 31 projects to receive $2 million. It's not set in stone yet, but we have been recommended for award, so we're very excited that we did get that grant, and we are moving forward with that project as soon as we do receive the funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. With that said, we'll move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports, if there's nothing else from the department heads. Who wants to start? Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, went to a number of committee meetings. Homeless Committee met a couple of times, went to the Cabot's event, which was very nice this year. We always appreciate that. Attended a Mayor's Town Hall meeting and was forced to say something at it, which I really hate. One of the good things, we've, we've had a number of positive things, and I think what the developmental director just talked about is a massive thing, because we have a huge problem with pedestrian accidents on Palm. And, and I just applaud the fact that we, we did what we did, and we've gotten some money for it, it looks like. That's, that's positive. But we also had a meeting at both the high school and Painted Hills Middle School that celebrated the fact that two teachers in Desert Hot Springs were named Teachers of the Year for the county. My friend Brian McDaniel, and I think most of the people here know him, he's, he's done a number of things for, for the city, got one of the awards and is moving on as far as the possibility of going to state, I think, is what it boils down to. Really big deal, as far as I'm concerned. Went to the Desert Hot Springs High School graduation. There, there are a lot of things that we have to do that I don't look forward to, and the high school graduation is one of the most fun, and, and really one of the events that we have every year that I really enjoy going to, because it shows the progress we're making as a city, looking at those young scholars and their graduation. I wanted to say something really quick, and I'm going to hold my comments down a little bit, about an article that was in the LA Times about the PACE program. We approve, have approved several PACE programs. These are programs that allow people to have upgrades done to their house, everything from energy to insulation to, you know, just basically fixing up their house. The problem with it is that there are some, some unscrupulous people out there selling various services. There was an article in the paper about a poor woman in Los Angeles that was sold a $50,000 upgrade on her house. She makes $11,000 a year, and her property tax bill had a bill of $5,000 on it for paying back that loan. So it is very, very important that when you're talking to people about energy efficiency programs, about doing things to your house, make sure you understand what's going on. Talk to a financial advisor, an accountant. It's worth money to talk to someone that has some expertise if you're going to possibly go into debt so much. I, I was fearful when we talked about this and actually said, we're not, we didn't, as a City Council, put any weight behind this. We were just allowing them to put these programs in, in place. We were not saying that the City Council was endorsing them. It's just very, very important to understand that when a salesman comes by about these things, that they may not have your best interest at heart. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to continue on that. Mr. Mayor, maybe we could put something on the agenda to call back these approvals that we've given, with an eye on revoking them. I've, I've gotten calls to my house telling me that, you know, this is a city program, and I go, oh, that's interesting. Tell me about it. So, excuse me. Oh my God. It's all the wrong hole. So maybe if we could get that on the agenda, that'd be good. Wow, I just lost my voice. This is going to be quick. So I got a really, really long list of things that I went to, but I'm going to go really, really fast. If anybody wants to hear any more detail, give me an email. Attended Southern California Association of Governments on June 1st with a discussion regarding, regarding light rail service expansion. It was my wife's birthday on June 1st, which is the reason that I have to apologize to our new supervisor, Perez, for not making the ceremony, but I understand the council member sitting next to me did a real good job as master of ceremonies. So, good job. I heard about that. They were all the talk of the town. Met with some people working on a bicycle event. I don't know what's going to come of it, but had some contact with the people that organized the tour to Palm Springs bicycle event, and thank you. And it's a little too early, but either thinking about a community ride or race, and then possibly... And um, it's a little too early, but either thinking about a community ride or race and then possibly some type of expansion of the tour to give Desert Hot Springs more prominence and that, obviously, that's something that has to go forward to the council, but um, that was interesting. I am working on a community ride, I found a ten or was it twelve mile run? It goes down Worsley Road and I thought it'd be nice for everybody to get out there and what's really, really nice about this is it's all downhill, so. Yeah, we'll get a bus and a trailer and bring everybody back, so I'm, I'm working on that one. Um, yeah, we gotta, I gotta pedal back uphill, it's no fun. Today, we delivered some welcome packet from the city to the employees at the new county building and just to let you know, I think some of the local restaurants are already noticing that uh, you know, some people, new people in town showing up for uh, lunch and so this, we're getting some good economic impact out of that. And so we just delivered a, a letter and a little directory of all the local businesses and a welcome booklet and um, they seem to be pretty happy about that. So, and smile on the faces of the few that we're able to hand it to and then they're gonna pass it out to all ninety employees. And Monday was the first day that that was now fully staffed. Attended the Airport Commission, we approved a budget or at least gave a recommendation to the Palm Springs City Council, they'll actually approve the budget for the airport, but we did the review work on that on the Airport Commission. Went to the Pearson Plaza Grand Opening, the Wardman Pool is open on May twentieth, went to the opening day, it's now up and running. Uh, the uh, it's a significantly expanded open swim time as it is with the Furbie Pool. Do we have an update, Mr. City Manager, on the Furbie Pool? Where are we at? Is that open now?
It is open and all the equipment is operating as it should be.
Good, perfect. So, there's an extended swim time, there's a lot of people asking, can they swim anytime? And they can, they can swim anytime at the Furbie Pool and the Wardman Pool, anytime that they're there, that is, that their lifeguard's on duty. I went to the Cabot's Soiree, went to the Women's Club Scholarship, went and celebrated Sunline's forty-year celebration, I'm on the board down there. Attended the high school graduation, the mayor gave a very good town hall um, event. And I highly recommend, if you have any questions, this is just a perfect format, and even if you just wanna sit and listen to the questions from your neighbors, they're really interesting. And the presentation goes pretty quick, it's the second time I've seen it, I'm not bored yet. So, uh, and then attended the Memorial Day Event, congratulations, C C A C, you did a great job, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savala.
Uh, I attended the Lilac Board Meeting, uh, the mayor and I met with um, the new Santa Snow National Monument Manager, uh, Jihadah, and we spoke about um, our interest in connecting our trails to the monument and expressing our interest to be the gateway city uh, to the monument. Uh, I had a wrap uh, board meeting and we went over grants. Um, I also attended the ACE uh, meeting here at Desert Hot Springs High School, that's the Academy for Careers in Education. Um, I also attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, it was a great event. Um, I attended the J F K Disaster Drill where they work with local students to um, use this yearly disaster drill to inform them about different uh, careers in healthcare. Um, I also attended the Department of Public Social Services Grand Opening, which was great, it's a beautiful building. Um, we also had the Pathways to Success Scholarship Ceremony, which I attended and this one was for all four-year uh, university students and we will be having one for our community college students. Um, and just kind of as a quick F Y I, um, path, the name Pathways to Success will likely be terminating soon considering that we are now called One Future Coachella Valley. So if you hear of One Future Coachella Valley, that's the scholarships that we partner with local organizations like the women's, the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club, uh, Boys and Girls Club and other entities to give out uh, scholarships to our local students. So, together in partnership, we're able to uh, distribute about a million dollars in scholarships every year to local students. So One Future Coachella Valley, remember. And then um, I also attended the Town Hall Meeting. Um, I was a delegate for Congressman Reeves in Sacramento this uh, past month, so I was not able to attend the uh, Cabot's uh, Museum Celebration, so I'm sorry, next year. And, and I was also unable to attend the Women's Club Scholarship Ceremony because I was stuck at the airport. Um, and then as uh, council member Buds mentioned, I was also the master of ceremonies for the ceremonial swearing-in of our new fourth district county supervisor, Victor Manuel Perez. So, it's been busy. Thank you.
All right, we all had a busy couple of weeks, uh, as stated before, the Department of Social Services Office here in Desert Hot Springs is open. Uh, ninety employees have been relocated from either Cathedral City or the Desert Hot Springs Family Resource Center to the new Department of Social Services. We know that sixty-five percent of the population here is under the low-income or annual poverty level here in Desert Hot Springs and utilize some sort of services. Now they don't have to get into a car, ride a bus or find their way to these services. They're right here in our backyard, um, right across from the high school, so if you have any questions when it comes to that, it's a beautiful center, stop by and see it. Uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau did meet, there was nothing really pertaining to Desert Hot Springs in the reporting. Uh, they were moving quickly on that meeting because there was another gathering happening, so uh, nothing really pertaining. Eddie Johnson, are you still here? Or did he leave? Well, he's our Vietnam Vet that spoke at the beginning of the meeting, I always like to give him kudos. Him and about six, five or six other Vietnam vets give a talk to the high schools in the Coachella Valley about Vietnam and they just did it a couple of Fridays ago. Um, I just wanted to give him kudos and say thank you for uh, what he does, uh, he brings light to that situation. He also was a key instrument, uh, key person who brought the Vietnam Moving Wall to City of Desert Hot Springs in two thousand and eleven at the high school and he's helped with the current committee on the Vietnam Moving Wall coming to Desert Hot Springs. With that said, June twenty-second at Mission Springs Park, we've raised fifteen thousand dollars to bring the wall here. Uh, it houses the people that travel the wall, the wall's construction and all the volunteers, food and um, those types of things. It'll be here on the twenty-second, as stated, uh, it will be a ceremony at six P M. to open the wall and then the wall will be here till the twenty-sixth for your viewing. Uh, I believe up to ten o'clock each evening. Also attended the Cabot Gala, it was a wonderful event, uh, as always, it was probably the best night out of the ten years I've been on city council and attending these things. It was, it was the nicest evening we've had since then and I think Russ Martin ordered that up, didn't you? Yes. Yeah. Riverside County Transportation uh, Commission Budget and Implementation Meeting, uh, Committee met. Uh, the City Desert Hot Springs will be receiving uh, S B eight twenty-one funding again, which is sidewalks, safe routes to school. Sidewalks, our city staff applied for it, it got pulled off the agenda because there was some hiccup with one of the applicants. It's coming back to us and then it'll be awarded this next month. Uh, it's another two hundred and I believe ninety-three thousand dollars, Danny, did I get that right? And it's gonna be from Cabot Yorks Elementary School down uh, Desert View, uh, safe routes to schools, it's putting sidewalks so kids can get to school safely. We've done both sides of Verbinia and now this will be done, so it's an awesome uh, grant and thank you to staff for applying for that. Also attended the Wardman Park Pool Opening, Furbie Pool is open as stated. Um, I'll talk more about an event that's gonna be going on this weekend there. Uh, the Women's Club gave away just under twenty thousand dollars in scholarships to uh, local students going off to college and to local schools. Um, Women's Club, thank you again for all the work you do. It's a lot of money to raise in, each year and give away. The town hall meetings have been going well, we've had a handful of them recently. We are now uh, not scheduling any uh, town halls uh, in big locations, we're actually just asking um, homeowners groups, uh, faith-based organizations and uh, any other organizations that wanna have a town hall meeting, we'll come to you, the chief and I have been going out, staff members and doing these town halls and then we'll have another big one sometime in September, October. This is an opportunity, instead of a big state of the city where you have to come and spend money to come and for one night, for a couple of hours, uh, we come out to you, do a thirty-minute presentation on the state of the city and then you get to ask all the questions you want. And we give you, we give you the best answers we can to those questions. So, uh, something that I thought of when I became mayor, after doing the state of the city and seeing what India was doing in their city, I thought it worked really well and I think it is working well. Uh, the Teachers of the Year, as uh, talked about by Mr. McKee, uh, Brian McDaniel, uh, who is the band instructor and choir instructor for Painted Hills Middle School, also was a band instructor at Desert Hot Springs High School, has won many, many, many awards for our city, became a doctor while going, while teaching school, he's just done a fantastic job and congratulations to him. There was only four teachers in Riverside County, eighteen thousand teachers that received this and two of them in Desert Hot Springs received it. Uh, Mr. Brian McDaniel and Miss, I'm not even gonna try to say her last name, it's B E Y R O N N E A U. Barones? Something like that, everybody calls her Michelle, probably because of that reason. But congratulations to both of you if you're out there watching or if you see them around, she's a teacher at the high school. Um, out of all those, all those applicants, two out of eighteen thousand received here in Desert Hot Springs, that's something to be proud of. A Memorial Day Event went really well, thank you to C C A C for putting that together, they always do a fantastic job, we had a flyover this year, which was really fun. Um, Desert Sun came in, did an interview, they're doing a bigger story on medical marijuana in our communities and the cultivation. Uh, USA Today will actually be posting a story here very soon across the country and Desert Sun was asked to do uh, part of that story out of the uh, uh, the Coachella Valley, so. We did some interviewing. Uh, Desert Hot Springs High School had its graduation, three hundred and nineteen students graduated, a hundred and seventy-eight are going to college. Uh, so that's pretty fantastic for the city of Desert Hot Springs. And we are the only city council, we've been told by the Palm Springs Unified School District, that actually shows up to the graduation, so thank you to all the council members for showing up. Uh, the Riverside County, which was very interesting, called me and wanted a tour of one of our cultivation sites. So I set it up for them, Candace, it was very uh, open to it and they gave uh, um, members, ten members of the Riverside County uh, a tour of our cultivation site, so. Uh, some eye-opening for them.
Was one of them the county council?
No, yeah, should have been. Inside joke, if you haven't been listening, they've been giving us some trouble. Um, C VAG Transportation, as stated, uh, I am the representative on that and we put in for multiple grants and we're, we're the number one awardee at two million dollars. The reason that we ranked high is that we have the second highest fatality injury rate for pedestrians in, in the Riverside area, in Coachella Valley. We're partnering with uh, Desert Regional on a pedestrian safety program in the community, but these grants like this for capital improvements, for stoplights, more lighting and crosswalks within areas like this is gonna be really important for the city of Desert Hot Springs. Uh, two million dollars, uh, this project has to be started within a year, uh, according to the uh, C VAG and so somewhere between Hacienda and Pearson on Long Palm Drive, you'll see major enhancements coming. And then the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Committee met and another um, feather in our cap, the Signal Synchronization Program for the Coachella Valley, uh, Desert Hot Springs was ranked high in that, that's basically synchronizing signals throughout the Coachella Valley, so you move uh, more freely uh, while you travel and don't have to stop and go so much. Uh, the program's gonna be, it just finished the study and, study phase and sometime in, in the future, probably not near future, but future, they'll be putting these uh, these synchronization program in, in effect. And the last couple announcements, uh, the Healthy Cities Initiatives Chairperson has put together this event for this Saturday. You'll find some flyers in the back, so I know you can't read it from that far, I can't, I broke my glasses this weekend. Um, June tenth, this Saturday at eight-thirty in the morning, uh, actually started nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, Train the Trainer will start and Meet the Police, uh, multiple other agencies there, they're gonna give away a hundred and fifty bicycle helmets to kids and adults, if you want a bicycle helmet. And uh, then at ten o'clock, they're gonna have a family fun ride and walk around the high school. And then at eleven o'clock, uh, there'll be free swim at the Furbie Pool and hot dogs, uh, hosted by the Desert Hot Springs Rotary Club Appreciation Day. So please come out, it's supposed to be like over a hundred and five degrees, uh, come out and bring your swimsuits, uh, bring your bike, take a ride and then take a dip and then get a free hot dog. Vietnam Veteran or Moving Wall will be here, we talked about that, and then lastly, the Senior Center. I was fortunate enough to be called to do a town hall at the Senior Center today, thank you Chief, uh, and Jim Henson, our deputy chief, for coming out with me today, uh, we were able to speak. About a year or so ago, I walked in the Senior Center and there was about three and a half, maybe four tables of seniors sitting there eating and they just didn't seem happy and the city council started to really review that. And we went back to the table with an R F P and came back with um, not very many good options for the Senior Center and we reached out across the freeway to the Mizell Center who came back and actually bid on the, today I walked in, there was standing room only. And it wasn't because we were there, they were actually there to eat lunch. Uh, it was fantastic um, to see that many people there, they have some awesome programs going on. Uh, Desert Hot Springs Senior Centers Rockin' Chair Singers are uh, gonna be June thirtieth at twelve-thirty, they're having a little concert, they're gonna sing a bunch of songs. And then they have art classes, uh, Wine and Wildflower, Bottle Decorating, Still, uh, Still Life, the black and white of it, uh, Painting and Drawing and Abstract, uh, Print Making, No Press Needed Greeting Cards. Uh, it's very inexpensive if you're a senior and, and have, wanna have some fun, please stop by the Senior Center, um, seems like they're having a great time. All right, with that said, Miss Parks again isn't here this evening, so we're gonna cut it short a little bit and move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is the nu, item number ten on the agenda, this is the Annexation Number Eighteen, Zone Nineteen to the City of Desert Hot Springs Landscaping, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number Two and Levy Assessments, Rancho Del Oro.
And Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, let me finish the announcement, our acting Community Development Director, Daniel Porres, will be giving the report and I think Mr. Betts has a uh, conflict here.
Yes, I have property inside the um, Rancho Del Oro, so I will recuse.
All right, as he's stepping out of the room, if anybody has a ballot that you've received in the mail, you may hand it in. Ms. Cernick is over there, she will wave and she will take your ballot. Um, at the, after we're done, at, when we close the public hearing will be the final uh, time that we can take a ballot. So we've got a few items to go through here, uh, we're gonna start with the staff report, Mr. Betts is out of the room now, Mr. Porres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Give a brief history and go over the annexation, what exactly we're doing today. Just a brief history, Rancho Del Oro, it's a residential community that was built in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, there were two hundred and fifty-nine homes that were built. Majority of the perimeter landscape was completed, there wasn't a landscape maintenance district that was formed and there wasn't a homeowner association that was formed at that time. Initially, the developer was maintaining the landscaping and some time ago, the city began to maintain it. Uh, since then, the city has been paying for landscape maintenance with no specific funding mechanism. We have um, Landscape Maintenance District, what exactly does Landscape Maintenance District? It's a funding mechanism that is used to pay for ongoing landscape maintenance of a development. We currently have eighteen active landscape maintenance districts and eighteen active drainage assessment districts. What it does is um, depending on a community, in this case, a residential community, eh, all the benefiting lots are assessed a certain amount on their property taxes. That amount is collected by Riverside County, then it is funneled through the city and the city then uses that money to pay for all the ongoing maintenance and all the improvements for that development. That was never formed for Rancho Del Oro, therefore, we're here to move that process forward. Um, over the last few years and a lot of years, um, we have explained the different processes to the, to the public. Uh, just during the last two years, we've had many public meetings with the Rancho Del Oro residents. In August of twenty fifteen, we met with the residents in this room and we explained and discussed the issues. Um, in June of twenty sixteen, we met again and explained the annexation process and the residents directed city staff to provide three landscape maintenance options. What that meant was the, the residents wanted to see a um, three different values of how much they would pay every month, a, a, the lowest value, a median value and a more expensive value. And they wanted to see some renderings on what exactly they would get for that value. In September of twenty sixteen, city staff presented the four landscape options and each associated cost. The residents in attendance took a poll and selected option three, which was one of the options that was, that was presented as a preferred option. We then brought those results to city council. City council then approved to begin the annexation process using that option as a preferred option and authorized to temporarily fund the landscape maintenance during the annexation process. In April of eighteenth, during the city council meeting, city council approved the resolution of intent and set the public hearing date for today, which meaning this is the date that the actual ballots were due. The ballots were mailed out on April twenty-first, the residents have two options, either to support or oppose it and it's due today, um, when it is counted during, during the actual city council meeting. What exactly does annexation mean? This means that the two hundred and fifty-nine property owners of the Rancho Del Oro are now voting to either annex or not annex into the Landscape Maintenance District, which will fund the landscape for the perimeter of the Rancho Del Oro development, which is shown here in blue. What would it fund? It would fund all the improvements and all the ongoing maintenance for all the perimeter, this is some renderings that were developed during one of the meetings, but some of the existing um, landscape would be upgraded and it would ma, be maintained pretty much for the rest of, rest of the time. Some of the associated costs with the annexation was for year one, it was seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, year two, it went down to sixty-two thousand, year three, uh, it was estimated at sixty-three thousand. What that meant, that that whole price gets divided into two hundred and fifty-nine lots, which would average or were costing estimated twenty-two dollars for the first year, twenty dollars for the second year, twenty dollars for a third year and so on. This is if the assessment is actually passed. We've had three public meetings since then, on April twenty-fourth, May seventeenth and May twenty-fourth, where we tried to explain and we tried to answer any que, questions that the public had, more specifically related to the annexation process. And now we're here today, again, April twenty-first, the ballots were mailed to the property owners to either support or, and, or support or oppose the annexation with a preferred option number three. These are due today, these are due actually right now and the ballots would be counted during this meeting and the way it works is the annexation passes if majority of the ballots that are. the annexation passes if majority of the ballots that are received are in support. So example, if we receive a hundred and fifty-one, we'd have to say yes to support it in order to pass. That concludes my staff report. Bring it back to the mayor.
And then I just wanted to announce that two years ago, a little over two years ago, the city council, before I was mayor, appointed myself and Mr. McKee to a subcommittee to talk with the Rancho Del Oro residents. Rancho Del Oro's had an unofficial subcommittee that was brought forth to talk about the history and how we got to where we are. Hopefully twenty years later, we're going to have a solution, whether it's for or against, we'll at least have a solution to this. So I appreciate all the residents for their input. I know it wasn't always fun. It was a little heated sometimes back and forth, but I think we finally came up with a respect for each other and their positions. Whether you, your, your position on the, on the annexation is yes or no, at least you'll have some solution to a long dragged out process. And I really want to thank the subcommittee, the unofficial subcommittee, of those people who came in and educated the city on that because twenty years later, you have different council members, different staff members and no one can, no one knew exactly what happened twenty years ago. So again, thank you to all of them. Mr. McKee, would you like to add anything?
No.
Okay. We'll now entertain questions of staff from the city council. Any questions? All right, we'll now open the public hearing. At this time, what we're going to do with the public hearing is this is your time to voice your opinion about this before the ballots are counted. You may come up, when you state your name, you'll have three minutes, just like at the beginning of the meeting. Please use professional decorum and this is your time to speak to the city council. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? All right, this is the last chance before closing public, before closing the public hearing for you to turn in your ballots. Does anybody have a ballot that they're continuing, they're, they're going to mark right now? Please raise your hand, please stand. I see nobody in the room at this time that has a ballot. We are now closing the public hearing and we will accept no more ballots at this time. Is there any discussion by the city council or questions to staff? With that said, we're going to take a recess. While we take this recess, you may, as a resident or a member of this public, stand next to the table, but please do not touch the table or interact with the, the people counting the ballots. You may watch them count the ballots, you may see what they're marking, but we, please do not interact. There's three officials that will be over there counting ballots and then we will come back to the open session and we will announce the results at that time. All right, with that said, we are in recess.
Can somebody find Mr. Butts?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's gonna take awhile to tally the votes. They've opened them, they've flattened them out. The computer program, now they have to verify them. That might take a little bit longer. We're gonna try to get a couple items out of the way while we do that. As soon as they're done though, they're gonna give me a wave and we'll finish whatever item we're on and we'll go right back to that item. So, thank you for your patience. We just wanna make sure the process is done correctly. So at this time, we'll continue item 10 until the counting of the ballots are done. We'll reconvene our meeting and go to item number 11. This is a conditional use permit, CUP 02-17. And a development agreement, DA 08-17. The development of an indoor marijuana cultivation facility for a total floor area of 621,920 square feet on 28.18 acre project site, APN 666-370-012 through 015. Located northeast of the I-10 freeway and Indian Avenue. In the light industrial zone applicant, Black Star Financial Incorp, Ray Doran. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, the meeting's back in session, so I have to ask you not to speak at this time. This will be the acting community. Sir, sir, at this time, everything's being recorded, so we have to have, the meeting's back in session. Thank you. The acting community development director, Daniel Porras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At the request of the applicant/client, staff is recommending that city council open the public hearing and continue the public hearing to a date certain of June 20th, 2017. We actually have some documents that we're currently revising that will be presented on the June 20th meeting.
Any questions to staff by city council on this continuance? With that, we'll open the public hearing at this time and take any testimony from anyone that would like to speak on this item. I see none. The public hearing will continue to be open and I will, I will take a motion to continue at this time.
Second.
Alright, motion in a second, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, with that said, we'll move on to item number 12. This is a resolution ordering annual assessment of Desert Valley Disposal Solid Waste Refuge Services of Residential Properties for fiscal year 2017 through 18. This is our administrative services director, Joseph Tanner Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Desert Valley Disposal, also known as DVD, is the current solid waste provider for the city of Desert Hot Springs. They entered into a new franchise agreement effective July 1 and runs through the year 2029. Pursuant to the franchise agreement, they are requesting that their annual assessment be placed on the tax rolls for residential properties. There are currently 7,282 accounts representing just over $2 million of revenue to DVD. We also have a representative here from DVD, Chris Cunningham, to help us ask any questions. That concludes my report.
Entertaining questions of staff from the city council. Does anybody have any direct questions to staff?
Just one. Where's Chris? No, you don't have to get up. I'd like to, at a date in the future, talk about the overfilling problem we've got in some of the commercial bins that we've talked about in the past and try and figure out how we can deal with that to make sure that they don't overfill them and then trash go all over the place because there's trash over the top. But besides that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any other council members?
So that would be changed to the ordinance, most likely. So maybe we could direct the city attorney to get together with Desert Valley Disposal and if you wanted to put that on or the mayor could, either way, I don't care.
Bring it back in the future for discussion?
Yeah, sooner than later.
Got it. Any other questions for staff by city council? I will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? I will close the public hearing at this time. City council discussion and questions of staff? Or I will accept a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
There's a motion for the resolution. Any other discussion? Please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember McKee? I didn't get your vote.
Mr. McKee?
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is the resolution placing Desert Valley Disposal, delinquent disposal billing on the county tax roll for fiscal year 2017-18. Administrative Services Director, Joseph M. Tanner Jr.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This item is to place delinquent billings on property tax rolls. A total of 89 accounts are in delinquency totaling just over 104,000 as provided in the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. This authorizes placing the delinquent waste disposal accounts on the tax roll. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Entertaining questions of staff from city council?
Yes. How do they get to be delinquent if everything's already on the tax bill?
Mr. Cunningham, please introduce yourself.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, my name's Chris Cunningham, representative with Desert Valley Disposal. The answer to that question, Councilmember Betts, is that in order for properties to be on the property taxes, there's gotta be some kind of uniformity to it. That's all of your residentials, your single-family homes. There's basically one service, it's curbside, nothing changes. But your commercial side and your multifamily side, that's gonna change due to seasonality, some other changes, so that's why those are billed still monthly.
That answers that question. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for the city council? Alright, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? We will close the public hearing at this time. City council discussion and questions of staff? And we'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
There's been a motion to adopt the resolution in a second. Any other questions? Alright, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Item number 14 is creating a special tax area, Zone 20, Merge LLC. Located east of Little Morongo Road, south of 14th Avenue and west of Palm Drive, APN 665-080-013. Within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area, our administrative services director, Joseph Tanner Jr.
Thank you. This is the, this item is to create a special tax zone for one commercial property known as the Merge Property. This, this tax pays for essential police and fire services for the city to help offset the general fund cost. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to staff? I see none. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
For the record, so there were no written protests received for this item. There are no registered voters within the territory of this zone. All the owners of the taxable property in this zone have consented to holding a special election. And lastly, I concur that a special election may be held tonight immediately following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? We will close the public hearing at this time. Would the city council like to have any more discussion on this item? We will now hold the election. Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, the landowner has cast a ballot with a vote of yes.
Alright, at this time, we can adopt an ordinance, establish a special public safety tax area, Zone 20. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Did I cover all the bases, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Item number 15 is creating a special tax area, Zone 21, La Plaza Center LLC, APN 641-101-005. Located at 12-106 Palm Drive. And APN 641-101-006, located east of Palm Drive and south of Pearson Boulevard. Within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Our administrative services, that's not, you don't have to recuse yourself on this, Mr. Betts?
Oh, I'm sorry. What one is it?
It's item number 15. Just state your recusal.
I'm recusing because we have a property at 12106 Palm Drive and this sure looks like the address there, so we're at 12106 and a half. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, with that, as soon as he steps out of the room, administrative services director, Joseph Tanner Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This again is creating a special tax zone for public safety for two non-residential lots. Referred to as La Plaza Center, which is located on 12106 Palm Drive.
Any questions to staff? Alright, no questions for staff. We'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Alright, I see none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Okay, similar to the last item, for the record, I'd like to state that no written protests were received. That there are no registered voters within the territory, that the owners of the taxable property in the zone have consented to holding a special election. And lastly, that I concur that a special election may be held today, June 6, immediately following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. With that said, will take any testimony? Anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? We will close the public hearing. Council have any discussion or comments?
I just asked the staff if I can know when that alley is gonna be opened up again. I'm asking that now, too.
Yes, we're getting a schedule from the contractor, so we'll send you it as soon as we get it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll hold the election.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the landowner has cast a ballot with a vote of yes.
Alright, thank you very much. At this time, there's no more discussion. I'll take a motion to adopt this ordinance. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Since Mr. Betts is still out of the room, staff can just notify him that we're gonna go back to item 10 so he can stay where he's at. Did he peek his head out there? Alright, at this time, we are going back to item number 10. The tabulation of the assessment ballots have been submitted and counted, and at this time, the city clerk will announce.
Okay, the results of the tabulation, in support of the annexation, 64 ballots and in opposition of the annexation, 75.
So at this time, the, that measure fails. The assessment. Alright, with that said, there is no more action by the city council at this time on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I may just interject, just for the record, the majority protest does in fact, you have, there is a majority protest. Therefore, exactly as you said, the measure fails, so there is no assessment at this time.
Alright, well, you have an answer to your question, whether you wanted an assessment of Lightning Landscape Maintenance District or not. I appreciate the subcommittee being informed and the residents for your, for your input on this at this time. City council has some decisions to make in the future. We'll be notifying you when those decisions are made. At this time, there's no other action by the city council. Thank you for attending. Yes, Mr. Betts, a return? Alright, so... Item number 16 at this time. Creating a special tax area, Zone 22, Bunch Palms Trail LLC. Located on the southwest corner of Cabot Road and 14th Avenue, APN 665-030-058. Within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Administrative Services Director, Joseph M. Tanner Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is a, creating a special tax, public safety tax that pays for essential services for police and fire to offset the general fund. And this is for one non-residential lot located along Bunch Palms Trail.
Number 16.
And cabins.
Alright, with that said, entertaining questions of staff to, from the city council? Alright, I have no questions from staff, or from council. I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I want to state that no written protests were received, that there are no registered voters within the territory of this zone. That the owners of the taxable property in the zone have consented to holding a special election. And lastly, that I concur that a special election may be held immediately following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Alright, we'll take public, second call? Final call? Alright, we'll close the public hearing. City council discussion to staff? Alright, we'll hold the election.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the ballot has been returned with a vote of no.
Alright, thank you for that. So what's our next steps, city attorney? Cannot adopt a special public safety tax, correct? The, the vote was no, so we cannot adopt an ordinance establishing a public-
That's correct. That is correct. That's correct. Votes no. So nothing, nothing moves forward. City council does not adopt the ordinance.
I think in the near future, we need to have maybe a study session on our options, and this is the second time we've received a no vote on a special tax area.
Right. Normally though, with, with, and I don't know if it's specifically with respect to this project. Interestingly, a lot of the projects do have either a condition of approval or if they're pursuant to a development agreement that the underlying property owner does in fact need to annex into the district or be, is subject to the special tax. So with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and look at this project in particular. Something similar happened with the Hyundai Hotel, if I, if I recall correctly. So, so I'll connect back with staff tomorrow and we'll get back to the city council.
Alright, well, we need to bring those back in the future so we can have discussion on our options.
Can I get a little clarification on that?
Sure.
Quickly, city attorney? So, a ballot is vote yes or no, and you always have the option to vote yes or no when you're casting a ballot, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, with that, there's no other action that's gonna be requested from the city council on this item, correct? Alright, I'm assuming that's a yes. Madam City Attorney? There's, there's no other action, there's no other action that needs to be taken by the city council at this point?
That, that is correct, not for this item.
Thank you for the clarifying that. With that, that's all the public hearing items we have tonight. We're moving on to the administrative calendar at this time. Item number 17 is the public art for MedMen cultivation project, CUP 04-16, located at the southeast corner of Little Morongo and Hoskins Avenue. And Scott Tashner, our planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The application, you're seeing, this is part of the MedMen project that was already reviewed and approved by city staff and by council. The art in public places, they're proposing two metal origami penguins at the entrance of the project. You can see, here's a rendering at the right side. We've got a site plan as well. Staff's available if you have any questions as far as height. I think they're three feet in height and about 10 feet wide, so just over 30 square feet. And they're stainless steel, powder coated. With that, both the planning commission and the cultural, the CCAC have made a recommendation to the city council for approval of the art in public places in lieu of paying into the program fee. The valuation is about $180,000, I believe. So, staff's available if you have any questions, and we do have a representative here in the audience.
Would you like to speak to the city council on this? Yes, would you like to speak? Thank you very much. I'll entertain questions from the city council at this point, Mr. Betts.
Can we put a picture up of the penguins? Can staff give us a breakdown on the cost? Those are $180,000. Can you, can you give us a breakdown on what's, the artists get that much, or?
I'm gonna defer.
We need you to come to the mic.
And does it include the glass box?
It's actually going to sit on a concrete pedestal.
Not a glass box like that? Or a glass crate?
No, it's going to have to be secured, and, you know, we've conditioned it for graffiti, but it's, you know, going to have to meet building department requirements as far as being, you know, sturdy and-
I wasn't that concerned about it. My question is about the art. Looks like an awful expensive, do you have some famous artist or something that?
Hi, council, my name's Priya Saluja, for the record. I'm the compliance coordinator for MedMen. We're here on behalf of DHS Green Horizons, Inc. This art piece is, yes, by a renowned artist. His name is Gerardo Aser. He's from Los Angeles, born and raised. He came from a really tough background, and he used origami as an escape. As such, he went to Los Angeles Trade Tech College and discovered welding, and it became his art form. We got a price evaluation from Gilman Contemporary Gallery. Gerardo Aser himself does not commission pieces, so this was a piece that was, I guess, like commissioned from an already built source. This, the typical evaluation is roughly seventy-five to a hundred thousand for one piece. This includes a mom and a chick, so there's virtually two pieces, separate pieces, that are being made and presented together. As to your question about the box, I believe it's a steel structure, not a glass box, that's basically used as a mounting to give it some height.
Good.
So if you go to the front entrance, you can see, there's just a little elevation given in the box.
Gerald, can you go back to that picture of the front entrance? Or Scott?
So do you see, sorry, do you see that it's just a bit risen?
Mm-hmm.
Effectively, that would be the gray box.
Okay, great, and CCAC approved this, and?
Yeah, they made a recommendation on May 10th.
Well, that's why the CCAC is there, I guess, it's far, far be it from me to be an art critic, so.
Christian McKee?
Well, I, I was concerned about the same thing my colleague thought about, and I actually did some research and went to a website called Art SY. And most of his art there was valued at between fifty and fifty thousand dollars. I'm, I'm really concerned about the difference. Sure.
Great, so we based our price estimate off of the certain dimensions that are acquired for each piece. Do you know what dimensions the pieces?
Well, there were, there were four or five pieces of various sizes that were between fifteen and, and fifty thousand. Is, is what that had for his sale.
It could be that per gallery, there may be price differentials, but this artist has been commissioned in very high-rating establishments. Several museums in LA, the city of West Hollywood.
I understand, I'm, I'm just saying, we're going to have to deal with this. We're learning as, as we go along, as far as a lot of the artwork is concerned. And my concern isn't so much with this, it's with how we move forward in the industrial areas, I've said before. I think we should do everything we can to encourage the artwork that's going to be created because of the cultivations to be put in, in the commercial area, rather than in the, the industrial area. So, that's more what I'm interested in than that, but, but thank you.
Go back to the main screen, please. No, the city clerk, go back to. Thank you, I have nobody else in the queue at this time. We'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, public comments. Anybody would like to speak to this? I see none. Close public comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So motion and a second on the screen. Any other discussion? I see none. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Approval of the Mission Springs Water District, initiating formation of Assessment District number fifteen of the Mission Springs Water District. So Administrative Services Director Joseph Tanner Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brad Neal, the legal counsel for Mission Springs Water District, will be delivering the, the report. Sorry about that. And Mission Springs Water District is in the process of initiating the formation of Assessment District number fifteen of Mission Springs Water District. The proposed Assessment District would include six hundred and eighty-nine parcels, of which approximately thirty parcels are within the boundaries of the city. The project that the Assessment District is being formed for is to provide sewer improvements to those parcels which are currently on septic systems. The proposed project will be approximately nine point eight million dollars, and the water district is-
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you for a minute. Within that assessment district, I work for Hidden Springs Country Club that I believe is in that assessment district. Is that true, John? Thank you, I have a financial interest in that, as I am their sales manager, so I'll need to recuse myself. Mr. McKee, since you are the former mayor pro tem, you'll be taking this item. See, I finally got you an item.
There, there you go, one that I really want. I'm not sure that you're in that, by the way.
The, the Assessment District will be, if formed, it will be formed pursuant to a landowner vote, where votes will be weighted on special benefit that are meted out to each parcel. The, the, there will be a public hearing held, and the process will be, will be compliant with Prop 218. The reason why I'm here tonight is that under the Thirteen Act, anytime an Assessment District is formed by an entity other than a city or county, and properties are within the boundaries of a city or county, the forming entity needs to get prior approval from the city or county in, in which those properties lie. So, like I said, there's approximately thirty parcels that are within the boundaries of the city, and the rest is within unincorporated Riverside County, and the county of Riverside will, will, will be approving with respect to those parcels.
Thank you very much. Mr. Betts?
Have you, as Mission Springs Water District, come to us every time that you have put one of these through?
It would be required, anytime that there is parcels within the boundaries of the cities, yes.
Okay, because I've been up here ten years, and I might have missed them, but I don't remember this happening before. Has this ever happened in the last ten years? So I would have missed it, okay. So something new does come along every once in a while. Okay, good, and what's the effect if we voted no?
Well, if you vote no, then the Assessment District couldn't proceed. They'd either have to rejigger the project and exclude the parcels that are currently within the boundaries of the city. And, John, I don't know if you want to speak to what damage that would cause to the residents.
I got that part, I'm just asking the question.
I, I'd like to know if rejiggered is a legal term?
And, so how long will these people be, this is a vote of everybody that's in here.
That, that's right, it'll be a landowner vote, a majority vote, weighted on the special benefit that each parcel within the boundaries of the assessment.
And you're going to get the assessment ahead of putting in the sewers? Or the sewers will go in at the same time that you get, if you get the vote, the sewers go in?
The, the Assessment District will, it'll be required to be formed before the, before the improvements are installed, yes.
Okay, so, but it could be what, two, three, four, five years before the sewers actually go in?
Good evening, Mr., well, sitting in, Mayor, I guess, and council members, staff. Mr. Betts, what we were doing here and proposing here is what we've done with most of our Assessment Districts since about nineteen ninety-eight, is that going after grant funding, which I believe Mr. Neal mentioned, there's about four million dollars in grant money associated with this project. What we do is, we need to get the local match first, and then we go after, well, we have grant money lined up, potentially. If we achieve the goal of achieving, of getting all the grant money we're seeking, then the project will go forward. If not, then we have about a ten-year window in which we can find other grant funding and go forward with the project. So, the key is get the local match in place through the formation of the Assessment District, and then get the grant money, put the project together, and proceed with construction.
Okay, and so despite any grumbling you may hear from somebody waiting for the sewers to go in, you are actually doing a good job on getting those sewers in. There's not any of these districts that are left now, is there? They all got sewers.
All that are still in play, yes. There was an expiration of a few properties left from the original, what we're calling the Groundwater Protection Project in two thousand fourteen. And I think, as you've noticed around town, there's a few areas that we've just wrapped up with some funding that are from both the state and federal government. This is a, a new approach, a new Assessment District we're forming from one of the previously expired areas, subareas.
And we got some new paving that we, as a city council, got credit for. Thank you very much.
Anytime.
That's all I have, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Well, I, I think since there's some confusion, as the mayor and mayor pro tems on here, I'd like to adopt the title Grand Poo-Paw. Is that okay?
You've been watching too much Fred Flintstone.
I think so. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
If we could now vote, please. Passes three and two abstentions. Thank you.
One abstention, one recue.
One absent, actually.
All right, item number nineteen, appointment to the planning commission to fill a vacancy for unexpired term. Our city clerk, Gerald Soriano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Serna resigned from the planning commission on April 11th, twenty seventeen, resulting in one vacancy. My office put out the notice of unscheduled vacancy pursuant to the MADDY Act and the government code. Two new applications were received for this vacancy, David Petrinovich and Vernon Rutherford, and then a previous applicant from Richard Duffel. This appointment shall be made by council member Zavala pursuant to the municipal code. And that concludes my staff report.
So I would, I would like to actually provide an extension for the application, given that I didn't receive a lot of applicants, and I'd like to have the opportunity to review more applications.
Motion to continue.
How long you want to continue for?
I would say-
First meeting in July, would that give you enough time?
Yeah, first meeting of July.
You want to make the motion?
That was the motion?
Motion to continue until first meeting of July.
And I'll second.
Okay.
That was an easy vote for-
Any public comments on this item? I see none, please vote.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number twenty, appointment to the Public Safety Commission to fill the vacancy for unexpired term. Mr. Soriano?
Similar to the last item, this appointment is, shall be made by council members of Ella. We received four new applications, Magdalena Duarte, David Petrinovich, as his second choice, Public Safety Commission, Jan Pie, Robert Roop, and then previous application, applicants interested in the appointment, Richard Duffel, as a second choice. Gary Gardner, Don Kelly, and Ellen Voight. That concludes my staff report.
So this one was actually very, very, very difficult for me. I love Jan Pie. I love her. However, in reviewing the applications, Magdalena Duarte spoke about her focus on child safety, and that really, really, really appeals to me, because it's, it's a focus that, you know, I feel strongly about, and so she was the only person that mentioned that. So it really got to me, and so I think for that reason, I will be appointing her to, to the commission, and hopefully she brings in that lens of focusing on, on child safety in the community.
Motion to approve recommendation of Magdalena Duarte. Did I get that right?
All right, there's a motion, and there is a second on the screen. Would anybody like to speak to this item? All right, with that said, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one is rezoning of two thousand, two hundred and seven acre study area located northeast, northwest of the Interstate 10 and Palm Drive Freeway interchange. Community Development Director Danny Porus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Or Scott Tasner.
Okay, on February 10th, the city council was discussing the I-10 corridor, and perhaps rezoning of that, and directed city staff to look at the two hundred and seven acre area north of I-10 and west of Palm Drive, after conducting some research, and also reaching out to MIG Hogor Island, who have previously been working on the city, citywide general plan update, and evaluating the timeline and the costs between doing the two hundred and seven acres, and then or resuming this citywide update, and including that two hundred and seven acres, as well as some other things that the city might want to pursue. Staff evaluated and has come up with a recommendation to approve proceeding with the citywide general plan update, and incorporating the zoning general plan amendment for the two hundred and seven acre study area, and also authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with MIG to resume and complete the citywide general plan update with approval asked to be formed by the city attorney. So, staff's available, if you have any questions. We do have Jose Rodriguez, he's the project lead for MIG Hogor Island.
Mr. Mayor, before we get too far away from what he just said, that sounded like a really good motion to me. Did you get that, Gerald?
That's fine, except for one thing, I, I still want to continue, consider putting a moratorium on the area. I asked about an overlay, and that would take about the same sort of manipulation. And, and I'm just concerned that in the period of time between now and when the general plan comes to fruition, that some of that will be gobbled up.
Can't that come back to us? I mean, we did that once already.
Well, we tried it in one other area that failed.
Do we have a map of the area?
Yeah. That is something staff has been considering too, during the time, because the timeline looks like about eight months to complete. That that might be an option that the council would want to pursue, as well as doing a moratorium on, you know, that two hundred and seven acre.
Would a moratorium cost a huge amount of money, or is it just a matter of writing a piece of paper up?
What would need to come back is, depending on how long the city council wants the moratorium to be, it would be most probably published in the newspaper, costs some money to do that. I would have to actually draft up the ordinance, so there's some legal fees in that.
Although that was free.
That's correct, all of our legal services. But, as a matter of fact, I have some good templates from the one that I had drafted previously. So hopefully the cost wouldn't be too much i- i- moving that forward. But I would need some direction in terms of what it would look like, et cetera.
Can we stand the zone on the map, please? The, when I brought this up to the-
Seven acres.
Yeah, when I brought it up to the city manager, why don't you talk about, Chuck, what you thought as far as what it's already zoned?
Well, you see the RD definition, that's a county zone for rural desert. We have a section, RR, Rural Residential, Commercial, and we have the Light Industrial Section. You'll see that the Light Industrial, Industrial Section, although runs along the north side of I-10, but it is significantly off of, off of Palm Drive, west of Palm Drive. I think that the area of concern would be the LI area, and as well as the CR area. But, again, if the idea is to specifically state that those two areas are only going to be utilized in the future for commercial development, and it is going to be restricted for other uses, then my, my only thing is, is that, at this point, those are the only buildable areas, so if we were going to do a moratorium, I would think those are the only two sections we'd have to concern ourselves with. Scott, can you add to that?
Yeah, because of the zoning, you know, if the moratorium is for cultivation, we wouldn't allow it in, the only zone that would be allowed is the LI. Yeah, because of the zoning, you know, if the moratorium is for cultivation, we wouldn't allow it in, the only zone that would be allowed is the LI. Commercial, it's not allowed, dispensaries are maxed out, so unless the council was gonna consider another dispensary down in that area, but.
I, I would only do that so the city manager's head would explode.
Okay. So, yeah, pursuing the moratorium, and beyond the black box, that other extension is a current project we have in Desert Land Ventures.
The only thing I'm saying about the LI is that it's, it's not a very buildable location because of access. But, again, that's, that's a decision above my pay grade. I'm sorry, sir?
I'm not following what you're saying. We're talking about incorporating this entire area within the black box, correct?
That's it. Yes, sir.
As a moratorium area.
But there is not a need to. The only area where you can build right now cultivation is in the light industrial area which runs just north of I-ten.
But I, I guess what I would say is there's not a need not to.
No, it's completely up to you.
That's the reason I wanted him to discuss this. I have my own view on it, and he has one that's different.
I bet you I'm agreeing with you.
I just wanna make sure we don't get ourselves into the same situation we had around Indian, where we sort of had already allowed a bunch of people to do things in that area. I would, I would just assume right now have a moratorium on it in general until we can figure out how we're gonna deal with that area.
We can pass this item tonight, and we'll just have to come back for the moratorium. Is that okay?
That would be fine, as far as I'm concerned. You've already made a motion, haven't you?
Can we get Scott to repeat my motion?
Before, before we do all that, I do need to take public comments. Anybody like to speak to this item? Second call, final call. Okay, I'll entertain the motion at this time.
Okay, staff's recommendation to the city council is approved with proceeding in the citywide comprehensive general plan update incorporating the rezoning and general plan update amendment for mixed-use commercial uses in the two hundred and seven acre study area, and two, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with MIG to resume and complete the citywide comprehensive general plan update with approval as to formed by the city manager.
Mr. Member, members of the council, just to be a little bit more clear, with, with, because we don't actually have the contract with MIG in the agenda, should the city council so desire, it would be to authorize the city manager to execute and negotiate a contract rather than just the execution.
I thought if we, we voted for this, we were actually just including it in the citywide general plan update that would be included in that cost since they're having to do it anyway. I didn't know that there was gonna be an increase in cost.
No, there shouldn't be any increase in costs.
No, that, that was my assumption.
You're exactly right. It's, this is, if we were to go with the, just the two hundred and seven acres, they gave us a specific price for that, but you'll see that it's almost, it's close to a hundred thousand dollars less than the actual price to finish the entire general plan, which would include this two hundred and seven acres.
Right.
And we've already under contract with these people, right, Danny?
We, we were before. This will be to complete that entire update, yes.
So we will, we'll have to negotiate the update, but that's the price of it.
That's correct.
And that'll include scoping.
And it'll include the two thousand acres and, I mean, two hundred and seven acres, and, and we will then obviously negotiate the balance. That was the price that they've quoted us, though.
So it looks like this is a motion. Hurry up and go ahead.
All right, so everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Gerald, can you get some sort of that on the screen?
Proves that recommendation.
I like it.
Good job.
It was Scott's recommendation.
All right, is there any more discussion on this item? Can I have a second on it? Please vote.
Motion, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two is to continue from the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting. Approval of the Second Amendment to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement of the Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority, known as ERICA. Chief of Police, Del Mondari.
Mr. Mayor, council. Hopefully, in, in the packet, you saw significantly more information, including the, the original JPA, and so that you can see the difference. I know this was reviewed, I believe, at Councilman Betts' request by the city attorney. And it, again, it basically, the premise is, currently, they operate our radio system, and then obviously the backbone that goes with it. What they're wanting to do is potentially expand into other technical areas and look for grant funding as, as a JPA, basically getting better bang for our buck. Does it commit us to purchasing or participating in any of those items? Or, or limit us purchasing as long as it's compatible with, with the current ERICA system, which we would have to do now. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. McKee, you're in the queue.
I just appreciate the, the chief's work on this. We had a discussion the other day about it. And my whole point in, in asking that this be fleshed out a little more was pretty simple. I wanted to make sure that our own police department had the ability to do what they thought was right and wasn't gonna be caught in a situation that the JPA was gonna be dictating to us what was going on. And as far as I'm concerned, we've gotten answers on that, and he's comfortable with it, so thank you.
Any other questions from council?
So the motion would be.
Hold on one second. Any, any public comments? Second call, final call. All right, Mr. Betts?
Well, I was just gonna try and work into a motion, the council member McKee's statement. Are you gonna, since you know that better than I do, that you won't tie the hands of, are you gonna include that in the motion, and I'll vote for it?
I, I can. I approve staff recommendation with the understanding that the, our local police department still has control over ultimately what is purchased.
I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Please vote. I was voting.
Hey, what happened to my second?
All right. Please vote. Sorry. I was just going for the area there.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I have nothing pulled off the consent calendar tonight. Any future agenda items the council would like to see that wasn't mentioned tonight? Hearing none. Any public comments? Anybody didn't get to speak at the beginning of the meeting would like to speak now. All right, with that, we are adjourned.